What are those funky wires hanging out of your phone?
That's a charger.
Oh, that's a charger?
Yes.
I'm looking at it, but it looks like kids' toy or...
It's old school.
I, uh, I went back to work as a consultant and I gave my number to a few people and now they actually think I'm working for a living.
So now you gotta keep your phone on, okay.
Ready? Good evening, we're going to stand and have, uh, pledge allegiance. Mackinon, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and thank you for all coming. We're gonna have a special meeting to the amended housing element and fair share plan of New Jersey.
And spending, and spending plan.
And spending plan for the borough of Saraville in New Jersey. This was prepared by Susan Gruehl and she's going to come up, or do you, who's gonna go first?
Well, I think that I was gonna say something, then I'll be...
Yeah, you gonna go over the ground with us?
Let me, let me just say preliminary, make a few preliminary comments.
Say what?
Yeah, we'll have a roll call first, yeah, let's do that.
Mr. Bello?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Lee? Councilman Limbo?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mackinon? Ms. O'Leary?
Here.
There you go.
Chairman Tai?
Here.
Mr. Rogoff?
Here.
Mr. Cornell? Mr. Leo Cavelo?
Here.
Okay, just a few preliminary comments, this is a special meeting as Chairman Tai indicated, for the purpose of conducting a hearing on proposed amendments to the master plan, housing element, fair share plan, and spending plan, copies of which have been provided and have been in the office for at least ten days prior to the meeting. What's very important for me to, to, to tell you is, I wanted to read the order of the court that basically guides us in, in you in this matter. It's dated February twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. It's not that long, but it's particularly telling as to what our guiding procedure is here for this hearing. This is an order generated by Judge Natalia, who's hearing, Natalia actually, who's hearing the affordable housing litigation, otherwise known as, in the matter of the application for a Saraville municipal corporation of the state of New Jersey, bearing document number MIT-L forty-ten fifteen. What it says is, is, is important for you to know and understand. So after it introduces all of the lawyers and the parties, it says, "On this twenty-third day of February two thousand and eighteen, Order Pet One, a final compliance hearing shall be conducted before this court on May ninth, two thousand and eighteen, at ten thirty a.m. before the Honorable Arnold L. Natali Jr., presiding judge of Chancery Division at Middlesex County Courthouse, and give the address." Number Two, the borough, Honorable Four, April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, shall comply with notice of the May ninth, two thousand and eighteen, final compliance hearing in court of applicable law. Three, Honorable Four, April ninth, the borough shall adopt all necessary zoning ordinances, resolutions, revisions to the borough's housing element and fair share plan and/or spending plan, and take any other municipal actions required to implement the terms of this court's July first, two thousand and sixteen, compliance order. Four, oral argument on the borough's pending motion for summary judgment shall be conducted on March sixteenth. Timing for submission irrelevant. Number Five, a decision on the borough's motion shall be rendered by the court on March twenty-eighth. I don't think that's happened. Let me get by that, at the end of that paragraph five says, "However, in the interim, this is critical for us, the borough should take all necessary steps to ensure compliance with the timeframe set forth in paragraphs one through three of this order." Number Six, the borough's immunity from exclusionary lawsuits shall be extended to May tenth, two thousand and eighteen, and any defendant may file a motion requesting the court to revoke that immunity before that date. Now, the reason I read that, that order to you is so that you understand that the borough is under court order to take the action this before you this evening. That's how Ms. Gruehl was retained for the purpose of drafting this very detailed historical, chronological analysis, amending the master plan, housing element, fair share plan, and spending plan, and spending plan, to comply with this order. Now, having said that, the people in this room should also note that these amendments are currently under protest by the borough. There's ongoing litigation in this matter, and we will not be discussing that litigation this evening, except to say that the litigation challenging the number of units and credits to which the borough may be entitled, that may impact the housing obligation, is ongoing. And if successful in one form or another, may impact the borough's ultimate affordable housing obligation. Beyond that, neither the board nor the public should make any comment that may prejudice the borough's position, or discuss matters that are the subject of ongoing litigation. With respect to comment by the public, I'm looking out there, I only see one person. The chairman has a right to reasonably control the length of time for comment and limit excessive repetitive or duplicative comment, and I'll see that exposure view here, that's how you look outside the, uh, the audience. Having said that, is there any questions about that? Before I get to any questions, I'd like to introduce two people who are here this evening. One, it's Susan Gruehl, the author of this magnanimous report, and the attorney with Jeff Sauerne's office, Mike Zszeniac.
That's good, that's good. Very close.
Fifty-five times to figure that out and I had to have it in spelling. He's a lawyer with Mrs. Sauerne's office that is, is handling that current litigation with respect to what I referred to before as that motion for summary judgment, with respect to what I told you about the order. So I want to give you that backdrop because over the life of this case, in the last three years, probably seven court orders. It's a very confusing prospect for most people, and even for planning board members, so I wanted you to have the benefit of, of, of that explanation before we get into the detail. So if, if no one has any questions about what I kind of preliminarily indicated, then I would simply call Susan Gruehl to, uh, to, to be heard.
And I was supposed to clarify for us.
Yes, and any questions that you have, she's prepared to answer them. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Gruehl to come forward.
I will go, I will go over there. Um, can you probably hear me? Do I have to do it for recording purposes?
Recording purposes, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna square her in. Ms. Gruehl, could you please raise your right hand, you swear the testimony you've had to give the board in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as a healthy guide?
I do.
Now, could you give us the benefit of the location of your office and your credentials?
Sure. Um, we are, I am a partner, I'm a planning firm of higher loan associates, we are located in Red Bank, New Jersey. Um, I have a master's degree in planning from our university, plus graduate work in finance. Um, again, I said I was a partner in the firm. I have testified and qualified as an expert witness in front of numerous boards and bodies in Superior Court. Um, I teach, um, at the Graduate School of Planning, comprehensive planning, including affordable housing, um, in the graduate school. And our firm and I personally have been involved in preparing numerous, um, housing plans for municipalities, and being involved in mediation and other aspects of affordable housing.
I think at this time we can take a motion.
So move, accept.
Except their credentials?
Absolutely.
Susan, you've been busy over the couple of years since I've seen you last.
Yes, we have been, we have been.
Okay.
Never gone long, right?
No.
So, um...
Now, Ms. Gruehl, um, I want to direct your attention to the amended housing element, fair share plan, and spending plan that's, uh, that's in front of us. It's dated March two thousand and eighteen. Did you prepare that report or have it prepared by people under your supervision interaction?
Yes.
And this, this report embodies your analysis of the borough's affordable housing obligation, and is consistent with what is required by the court's order dated February twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, is that correct?
It is, and it's also consistent with the municipal and these laws of the rights to the components of the housing component structure.
All right, and this includes, this report includes significant housing, historical and demographic data, existing housing conditions, and site analysis, and other important data, which you use to reach your conclusions contained in that report, is that correct?
That is certainly a component of the housing.
And your opinions and conclusions are contained in this report, are they not?
Uh, they are.
This report also has a table of contents, does it not?
It does.
For the purpose of the record, I just wanted to briefly itemize the main topics contained in the table of contents. Part one is the housing element, which consists of many things, including demographic charakter, characteristics, existing housing conditions, employment data. Part two is the fair share plan, consisting of numerous topics, including present, prior, and existing, or current round, existing, um, affordable housing needs. A summary of the fair share compliance. Part three is the spending plan, which includes revenues for certification period, and expenditure, schedule, and a summary. It includes numerous appendices through appendix U. Does that fairly assess the contents of your report, Ms. Gruehl?
Yes, it does.
Now, Ms. Gruehl, can you briefly comment on the essential elements of the amendments to the master plan, the housing element, fair share plan, and spending plan, as more specifically detailed in your report, which I'm now entering into evidence as a one?
Sure. Um, as the board is aware, there are certain, um, obligations that municipalities have as it relates to affordable housing, based upon, um, the obligation that the borough of Saraville is attempting to address, is, is part of three components. One is the rehabilitation need, that is sixty-seven units, and that will be proposed to address in the old plan, as well as this plan, addressed through your community development block grant program, that you already have established, and has been successfully running for a number of years. Number two, the component of prior round, and that is an obligation from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-nine, which the borough had addressed previously. It is two hundred and sixty-one units. That was being addressed through Lakeview Development, uh, and, uh, proposed luxury point, and certain rental bonus credits, up to twenty-five percent rental bonus credit, and be granted, um, through both the prior round and when we get to the third round. So your entire prior round obligation is addressed through those, um, three ways. Um, your prospective need is seven hundred and eighty-five units. That was determined as part of the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Act, which is a participant in the, uh, in the borough's obligation. So seven hundred and eighty-five. I'll just kind of go through some of the ones that are similar, and then go through what has been somewhat modified, based upon comments from the court master, as well as, um, certain existing credits that were not in the old plan. Um, luxury point, the remaining units in luxury point are within the, um, proposed prospective plan. Um, there's one deviation in terms of numbers because there is a, this gets really technical, it's kind of like doing your IRS tax returns. But when you're dealing with age restricted, um, limitations, you can only take credit for twenty-five percent of your obligation through age restricted units. But when you look at that, you estimate down. You don't, if it's a fraction, it must be done down rather than up. For rental bonus credits, it's up, okay? It's, so that one unit between your former adopted plan and this one was because it's down rather than up. Again, it's kind of very technical, but that's the reason. You have, um, and again, this goes to court order, Capitol One, Capitol Two, um, you've got, uh, an accessory apartment program, ten units, okay? You have Chase Partners, it's age restricted, and that has been constructed, and that's part of the plan. Um, you've got Cross Avenue NL, which again is part of the court order, for resuming, that's there. Um, and you've got where we get a little, um, different, is Lakeview. It, uh, turns out that Lakeview, and this is important in terms of, again, going back to the age restricted units, it turns out that there are three hundred units in the Lakeview. And, um, previously it was, um, it was assumed that all of those units were age restricted. It turns out they aren't. A hundred of those units are non-age restricted, or family units, and two hundred are age restricted. Well, that's quite a difference, because again, we have this cap on age restricted units. And you have a number of age restricted developments, so you were maximizing your crediting of, of possibility because you had so many age restricted units. Well, we just found a hundred family units that don't go in the category of age restricted. So those really changed the, the numbers and the way that those play out. Um, the other change is River Road. River Road originally was proposed as an inclusionary development, meaning it was a market and a set aside, fifteen percent set aside. In the plan that you have in front of you, River Road is proposed as a one hundred percent affordable project with eighty-eight units. And, um, those would be, um, as noted in the, the, um, plan, um, there are certain requirements for a hundred percent, there would be a submission for tax credit, tax credits, and certain, um, certain requirements for that. But those are feasible and what we have in the plan at this point. Now, again, it's what column everything goes into, but because we freed up a hundred age restricted units, now we take some of the Gillette Manor age restricted units, that before we weren't able to take, because we were capped on the senior, okay? So we have Gillette Manor, we have some from there. We also have discovered that there is a group home, existing group home, called Carrion House, that, uh, has four bedrooms, which count as four units. And those can be, um, taken. Um, we also have, uh, and we're still working on that, but there is a warding home in Parlin, Parlin, what, how, where the house? Um, and we have definitely, um, had the documentation for one unit, and we may be able to supplement that with additional documentation. But for purposes of this plan, we have taken one credit there. The last category which you will see is not in, is the Saraville Housing Authority projects. Um, those were, um, there was credit in your previous plan for a hundred and eleven units, and, um, it was, those credits were questionable at best. There are very specific standards that must be met, and documentation that must be provided for in order to have units creditworthy. And the court masters has indicated as well that those were, um, credits that were questionable. Um, as a result of that, we have substituted some of these other creditworthy projects into the plan, in order to make the plan compliant and meet the requirements of the, um, affordable housing regulations, uh, and the requirements of the court and the court asked. So that is, that, and, and again, the last piece is the rental bonus credits, the twenty-five percent you can take for rental bonus credits that are not units per se, but they can count as bonus credits, okay? So that's what we have as the core of the plan. The other piece is the spending plan, which, um, I think you're aware that, um, the borough did pass a ordinance that provides for development fees and for a housing trust fund. And that is the manner, that's a very formalized manner where development can, money can go into the trust fund and be used to support and assist in providing affordable housing. Um, there is a need for a spending plan, if you have a housing trust fund, for a spending plan to be put together that projects your revenue based upon your historic development, um, trends, and also projects how you're going to use that revenue that is projected to come in. And, um, and we have done that, we have put that together. Um, I would note that, um, on page forty-nine of the spending plan, there is some, um, change, it's a refinement of the language. The first paragraph under number three, description of anticipated use of affordable housing funds. Um, we propose to replace that first paragraph with the language, and I'll just read this exactly. Subject to the borough's right to use trust fund dollars in its exclusive, um, discretion, to fund the one hundred percent affordable River Road project, funds collected from property designated as an area in need of redevelopment may be reserved by the borough to fund the construction of, or to assist with affordable housing projects within that area in need of redevelopment with the consent of the Saraville Economic and Redevelopment Agency. So that's what we propose as a replacement. Um, it really is within the, more of the jurisdiction of the council, but I did wanna note that here, okay? Um, and on that note, I think I've tried to highlight, I, I don't wanna put you to sleep. Um, this is, you know, this is a four hundred and eight-page document with all the attached documentation to the extent... to the extent that we felt was relevant, um, and again, that'll put you to sleep at night easily, but, um, and I'm certainly here to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Comments, whatever.
All right, Mr. McEnamie?
I have a question, um, Gillette Manor, which is a hundred percent, um, age-restricted, has a hundred units, managed by the Sable Housing Authority.
Yes.
Why are we only taking eighty-four of those credits with something that's existing in, in, in operation versus the River Road that has not been built yet?
Um, there, there are two reasons. Number one is because, um, again, you have the cap on the senior.
Right.
So we couldn't maximize that. The other is that in your previous plan, a portion of those units were used to apply to your rehabilitation component, even though it's new and rehab and all that, it was, that was what was done.
Now, my, it's my understanding the borough can request the waiver, the twenty-five percent cap established under round two. Why would we not do that?
No.
We can't?
No. Because the settlement agreement does not permit that, and there are no waivers that have been given recently under this scenario, and certainly, I might be, may be able to talk about that, but in all of the settlement agreements, you waive your right to go back for a twenty-five percent waiver. I mean, you waive your right to ask for the waiver.
The waiver wasn't absent at one time.
At a way back, way back. Things of, the world of affordable housing has changed quite a bit.
Well, that's the problem, why it's so confusing, because, you know, then you gap years, and then, you know, it just, I, this is the first thing I've read that makes sense as far as organization, um, in detail, to the point that it answers some of those questions.
It's confusing us, and every day it changes, potentially. So it is certainly understandable that it's, that's why I say it's kind of like filing your tax returns, because depending on which column you put it in, it could change the way it's done.
Right, I understand. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Ms. Grule? Do we want to hear from the attorney?
Only if you have a question.
Only if you have a question.
I have a question, just maybe Jake can answer. The, the Gillette development that's going up on Main Street, um, that's age-restricted. Does that factor into any credits available for affordable?
It was not approved with any condition that the affordable housing be included as part of the construction. So I, I think maybe initially there was some discussion about it, but I don't think that ever was able to pan out.
Those are all market rate units.
Well, and again, you had, you are, were pretty much capped on your senior.
And, and what happened was Mr. Gillette ended up this, you know, passing away before anything came around, you know, that's what happened. It sort of, there was conversations with him and towards that, you know. It's a shame.
That's the extent of the, the presentation we have insofar as, uh, the plan that's in front of you.
All right. So we have, we have to accept this or deny it tonight?
We have to open it up to the public.
I make a motion that we open up to the public to, uh, talk about the amended housing element and fair share plan and spending.
By the way, I should just note that one member, there are two members in the public here. One member is McKinley Marks from our office, who has assisted in the preparation of this plan.
Okay.
So that leaves one.
That leaves one. So, and, and we have a mystery guest, and she can remain a mystery guest if she likes. Okay. So, uh, anybody else want to speak? If not, I'll, I'll have a motion to close the public.
Some motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. You've seen the amendment of the, uh, housing amendment element and the fair share plan, um, and what is your pleasure? Do you want to send it back to the, approve it and send it back to the borough and council?
I think you have to vote on it, and if, if you vote favorably, there's a resolution consistent with that favorable vote.
Mr. Chairman, I need to make a motion that we adopt the amended fair element as written and brief to us this evening.
I'll second that.
Okay, having, uh, a motion and a second. Do I have any questions under the motion? If not, I'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Bello?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Limbo?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McEnamie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes, Ms. Grule, thank you very much for a well presentation. Um, it was an easy read compared to some of the stuff that we've been through in the last couple of months. Thank you very much for your due diligence. Um, yes. So we want to, you want to introduce this resolution?
I'm sorry, that was, everybody voted in favor of it?
Yes.
All right, so the next thing would be to, to adopt the resolution memorializing what you just did.
All right, we have a resolution to adopt, uh, the resolution of the planning board of the Borough of Saraville in Middlesex County, New Jersey, adopting the amended housing element and fair share plan under the protest pursuant to, um, South Burlington City, N-A-A-C-P-V, Mount Laurel Township, ninety-two, New Jersey, one fifty-eight, nineteen eighty-three. Do I need a motion to accept that resolution that we just, uh?
So move.
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any questions on the resolution? If not, I'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Bello?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Limbo?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McEnamie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
That, okay, great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Um, and I'd like to thank the board for coming out on a, on a Thursday night. I know it's not our usual thing, but, um, our next meeting, the fourth, come with your bells on because the Riverton people are coming. They're going to come and, and tell us, um, their five-year plan, this, that, and the other thing. Um, Mike and I and a couple of the people were talking before the meeting. If you didn't have a chance to go to the meeting that they had...
I didn't, but I didn't know, was it noticed somewhere?
Yeah, it was in the paper all over the place.
I, I didn't see it.
You know, and, and we didn't get any special notice. We just got notice that, you know, from the town, but I went down there, you know, we've seen a bunch of developers come and go. The one thing I liked about this is the guy showed you what he was going to build down there, and then he showed you what he's got up and running in three different parts of the country. And they built the place outside of Atlanta that's gorgeous. And if he does half of the job that he did down there in, in Riverton, we're going to be, we're going to be tickled pink, so, um...
Oh, I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, well, they, they asked if we could do anything. I said, yeah, come before us and, you know, let the rest of the board know. So that's what they're going to do. They're, uh, starting to firm things up a little better. So, I mean, I, I was very impressed, so, that's it. That's all we got? Make a motion to close? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you on the fourth.
Mr. Limbo? Did the council brief this too? Did she brief the council? Does that mean she did that?
No, they came before, they came before Saraville.
Was this mine? Wouldn't the council be...
It will eventually get to the council.
Yeah.
So it's Saraville first, and it comes to the planning board, then it'll go to the council.
They got a big little jacket on.
All in, all in three days, right?
The council has to vote on this as well, in casters? We adopt it, and it's up to them to...